Let me know when we're good. Okay. Okay, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our special meeting of councils. Welcome to all members of council, staff, and members of the public. Thank you for joining us today. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interests? Seeing none, motion to accept the agenda. I have a motion moved by councillor Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by councillor Massey, that the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda of the special meeting of council on Wednesday, November 4, 2020. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Continue. Moving on to staff reports, building, planning, and bylaw department clear cutting bylaw review. I have a motion moved by councillor Noble. Oh, sorry. That's for, there is no motion. Kasia, take it away.
Sorry, I'm getting back.
But then the public won't hear me. Okay. So does anybody have any comment on what Kasia just brought up at this point? Councillor Manley.
So I, the way I look at it, if that's where the definition of normal farm practice comes from, then I don't see any, any problem with with using that in the, in the bylaw. It would make sense to use that in the bylaw, I would think.
Everyone, any other comment on it?
I'm not following you right now. I'm trying to get on here.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, councillor Manley. Okay, is everybody okay with that? Okay, so add that. Next one. Turn off the sound on your computer. Comments?
I'm not, I'm not clear on that.
It's, it's 15 meters an hour zoning by law from provincially significant wetlands, and we've recommended five meters. Are we good with that, sticking at five meters? Well, it's saying that there's nowhere else that it supersedes it in provincial legislation. Question, Kasia? Councillor Massey.
So what's the provincial guidelines like do? I know we probably said it, but I'm confused a little bit. So is there any guidelines from a, 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 seeing if they can wetland area that nobody can touch either agriculturally or for, for house or home or something? There must be. So just for example, if I go behind the mill, then there is a, but it has nothing to do with the water source protection away. Like the creek that runs behind the mill, like you, I know you can't farm close to it because it's a water source, I guess. So other than that, there's no, there's no policies in Ontario that prevent anybody from doing right up close to a swamp or something. Okay.
Are there questions? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Just with regards to kind of this, this process, because what happened at the last meeting is we're all kind of getting lost in the, lost in two documents. When you're moving from one area to another, Kasia, can you please read out the section that were, that's in the actual bylaw first? And then, and then get it into the session so that everybody hears the actual section that we're, we're referring to?
Yeah.
And then the potential changes.
Okay. We'll do that. Okay, so we need to move on from this one. Everyone's comfortable at five meters? As opposed to 15? Okay, five meters. Continue. Yeah, go ahead, councillor Manley.
Just on the, the statement in there, Kasia, under 33, that says, add clause, other provincial legislation supersedes this bylaw. And we talked about putting that into, into the bylaw. I would like it to, to say this, I'd like it to say provincial regulations will supersede this bylaw, including, but not limited to, the Ontario Forestry Act, section 10, 1, 2, 3. And that section of the forestry act deals with boundary trees. And there's, it specifies in there that if there's a tree on a boundary line, property line, that that tree can't be touched. And there are fines associated, and this is enough in the Ontario Forestry Act, there are fines associated with that. I think it's 20,000, maximum $20,000 fine or three months in jail is what's, what's listed in the Ontario Forestry Act. So I think we should reference that in our bylaw, just so that people are aware when they're clear cutting, that they need to be cautious of that boundary and need to know where that boundary is or whatever, because it will, will impact them if they're fined under the Ontario Forestry Act.
Good point. Everyone's good with that? Thank you, councillor Manley. So Kasia, we'll add that in. Okay. Perfect, next one.
Okay, so section 3.2, which pertains to line 6.2, reads as follow. The township officer will contact the following departments of the township. For comments, so the township bylaw department, the township fire department, the township public works department. A professional as required. And, and appropriate local conservation authorities. Any comments?
Okay, so we currently have, you're asking, why do we have to contact SDNG roads if the push isn't along the road? And? Any comments on that? It makes, go ahead, councillor Manley.
That actually placed in section 6.1. It actually says, do applicants must contact town transportation department, accounts for Mount Dundas Glengarry, technical written comments. And we had said last time that that only had to happen if it was on a county road.
That's right. I think that was self. That was already, yeah, it was self explainer when we said that. Everyone's good with that? Which doesn't make sense, right? So, okay. Continue on, Kasia.
No changes there? Okay. Line 48. So the comments that we received to 46, which is policy 6.2, is many comments received have centered around the number of departments and questions regarding the comments in this process. We suggest publishing a schedule or guidelines that these departments will follow for our consideration and discussion to clarify council's intent. Any comments? Any agreement to this one?
Councillor Manley. No.
Yes.
Yeah, it's up to us to do that. Everyone good? Yeah, go ahead.
And I see that, Kasia, that you, to add on the side, is that we're going to discuss that after or?
Yes.
Okay, so there should be a period of where the actual operation or clear cutting or clearing, whatever, starts longer than a week. Anyways. Okay, sorry.
Okay. Okay, so then the text to add, at least one week ahead of the start of clear cutting operation, the township officer will notify bordering property owner. And they will share the timelines and details of permit with the neighbors. Comments?
The, the, it's like, like when we do a notice of adjustment on a bylaw, perhaps or adjustment to a bylaw, I think a week is very short in my mind. Like if that person happens to be away, like there's no time for a person to say, yes, I'm against it, no, I'm against it or something. So a week is like, can we not do the following, like what we do with our other bylaws is like 21 days, like we send out a paper and I know it's a lot of stuff, but if there's a concern from this guy that gets the, he's, he's away at that time and he doesn't get the letter or something, we might have too much feedback or negative feedback at, at the end of the day, like, like, like when somebody wants to build a building or something, there's like two, three months ahead and everybody's noticed a, I don't know if that makes sense, but a week is very short.
Councillor Wensink. Councillor Noble.
And I'm wondering where we build in the time when we were talking, there's a couple sections that it says if you agree with your neighbors. So obviously, we have to kind of build in some time there that you've already talked to them, or do you go talk to them after the township has contacted to say this is what your neighbor is doing? Are you okay with it? I just wonder if maybe that's a couple of days in there, too.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just concerned that we're, we're going to be putting in a barrier here to, to actually, to, to the farmer who wants to get that land cleared. That's not the intention of this bylaw, is to provide a barrier. We want, like, what is, I mean, if it's sensible to add that, what's the rationale behind it? I don't understand the, the rationale, like, we don't, like, you want to give people, the public, two weeks so that they can object? I don't, I don't think that that's the intention.
That's, yeah, that's definitely not the intention. I mean, that's.
If, if, if the neighbor has concerns, valid concerns, obviously, they need to be addressed, but I don't know. But, you know. Because there's, I don't know what the timeline should be for that and, and what would be valid concerns, for example, you know? I'm, I'm, I'm not certain.
Because we have parameters set up for what we want, wanted to be, and the person in the building department that's okaying the permit will make sure that it's within those parameters. I think when we talked about going with neighbors, that if you wanted to get closer or do something else, or put rocks there, you start another rock fence that you would talk to your neighbors, and if they were okay with it, they would sign off on it and it would be fine then to move forward. So that's what I think was when we were talking about neighbors, it really wasn't about, you know, we get a permit and we give, you know, we send out a letter, we give people seven days or 14 days to comment on it. Councillor Manley.
Yeah, I think I agree with that, but I also think that, I think that, just a common courtesy to the neighbors, when they wake up in the morning and, you know, there's 100 acres of land being cleared beside them or whatever, that they, they, they need to know that, right? And I'm not, I'm not saying that, that they're objecting to it, but they just need a heads up. That this is going to be happening. And, and we get back to the boundary, boundary line again there or whatever. I know, I know of one person who actually went out and marked some boundary trees on that boundary between their property and the neighboring property before it was clear cut, so that, so that they knew that those were the boundary trees or whatever, and those couldn't be touched. So there has to be a little bit of time there or whatever to be able to do that.
Councillor Manley.
So are we talking about turning this into notification? Properties, so if they're touching like there with a zoning change or a severance, they're given notice. With a severance, it's minimum 30 days, it's got to be posted. Usually they have longer than that to comment, but if we do this at, say, 21 days, not business days, but 21 days, they've got three weeks from date of notice or date that a letter goes out, a date of, a letter of notice rather goes out, to the date that they have to comment. And I guess the other question is, are they actually commenting, saying, no, I don't want this to happen? Or are they just being given notice as courtesy that this is happening? And if that's the case, then do we really need a?
It's just a notice.
Do we need a week? Do we need two weeks or do we need three weeks?
Just a notice to say that it's happening.
That an application has been submitted.
Right, because there's no, they, they can't, once it's passed by the building department, it's like a building permit. Once it's passed, you're not, someone's not putting in a comments to, against it or for or against it, it's not the same thing as a planning issue. Councillor.
So we'll, not like it says to add, but we're not going to add this to it.
Well, so I think, what I'm hearing from everybody is that we are going to send out a letter to the neighbors.
As a courtesy, courtesy notification.
Yeah. Go ahead, councillor Manley.
I think two weeks would be lots. I think, two weeks, that would be lots of.
Okay, everyone's good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Continue.
Is that good in the bylaw?
Yeah, so line 49, it is our understanding that the township only aims to seek comments from the governing conservation authority. If the property in question includes a PSW, so wetlands, in this case, this needs to be moved to another section.
Comments? Go ahead, councillor Manley.
I'm not sure that it needs to be moved to another section, it says as required. So if it's needed, if it's such in a PSW, which is, is like the county roads, it's only happening if that comes into play. So it's not on everyone, it's as required.
Yep.
That's it.
Yeah, thank you, councillor. Next one, Kasia.
All right, the addition of the consultation with forestry professionals should be included with the agronomist, that's line 50, with statement of the suitability of the land to be transitioned into productive farmland being addressed. There have been sites within the community that have been clear cut that are not suitable for farming and will never be productive land. That's line 50 comment.
Go ahead, councillor Manley.
I don't see what the relevance of having, like, if people think that their land is going to be productive, it's up to them to develop it and then if it's not productive, it's not on us, like, I don't think we need the, the, like, I'm sure people aren't going to spend $5,000 an acre to clear a land and drain it, tile it, and then for no good reason. So it's not a mission that we rely on from an agronomist or forestry or anybody. If they're following the guidelines, they're okay.
I agree with that as well. Go ahead, councillor Manley.
Only thing I'd add is the, the only sticking point there really is butternuts. So you're looking at Species at Risk Act. If you've got trees, then you may need either a butternut health assessor or a registered professional forester. That, so the only, the only reason to put it in there would be a professional agronomist and/or registered professional forester as required.
Is this part of, is that part of our township mandate? I mean, you know, I, I think that we're, we're expanding our powers a little bit too far, you know, by doing something, that's my opinion, I, I just don't, I don't see the problems, go ahead.
Well, and that's the, the only thing I'd say is if, if we're giving them permission to clear cut and we haven't assured ourselves or anybody else that there's butternut there or is not butternut there, and they get removed, there's a potential liability issue there. I'm just bringing it up.
Councillor Manley.
I don't see that as a, as a liability to the township, that's, that's on the property owner, property owners considering that or whatever, and there's butternuts on there or whatever, that's their, I think they're, the fact that we're giving them the right to clear cut or whatever.
I mean, to send, to send one of our staff through 100 acre forest, looking at trees, I think is a little bit ridiculous and, and onerous on our own staff. So I just, I don't think we should be sticking our nose into that. Everyone in agreement with that? Go ahead, councillor Manley.
On that point, I think when councillor Manley suggested we add the good forestry act in there, I'm sure it's in there somewhere, like not to cut the, so I think we already covered that thing and we don't need to.
Deputy Mayor.
So when, so then, then I'll ask the question, because professional agronomist, agronomist as required, so maybe that shouldn't be in there.
Kasia? No. The question was, why, why, why would we have a professional agronomist? What, when would we use that? Again, I think we're going back to. It's their land that they want to, at this point, we, we're not stopping clear cutting, we're trying to make this a nuisance by law and to limit some clear cutting close to boundaries, but again, my opinion, you're good. Okay, so we don't need that in there? Okay.
So that, that, that's remove D, right?
Councillor Massey.
I think I'll, I think what I'm getting at the, in, what I'm looking for here, like on the left, it's the actual bylaw. If I get that right, and then the other ones are all comments, so we don't, they're already not, so what's on the right at bottom, it's just comments.
Right. So we're saying not to add it.
Okay, so yeah, not, not removed, not to add.
Yeah, but we, we need to, if it's in there, so we need to remove it.
Okay, okay, so that's where the getting, because I don't know what is, are the comments and what is the bylaw. So the agronomist part, no, we don't need the.
Okay. Continue.
Okay, so I'm hearing that the agronomist should be removed from that policy. Okay, thank you. So moving to line 53 then, well, who pays for a professional agronomist? That explains itself, it will be removed. So then line 54, item E, that still pertains to policy 6.2. The township of North Glengarry may wish to enter into an agreement with the RCA to review applications. So for consistency purposes, this.
Stop right there. None of us are in favor of that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So policy 6.3 for line 55.
6.3, applications for permits will not be processed if an applicant has not attracted the required fees in subsections 6.1, or applications have not been completed or extensive requirements as mentioned submitted with an application have not been included, or applications are not in keeping with the general purpose and general bylaw, or the prescribed application fee as set forth in subsection B has not been paid.
Thank you, Jacob. So then the first comment is D, this is a bit vague. If the general purpose of the bylaw is to protect and enhance the tree canopy, then no further clear cutting will be permitted, given that the recommended minimum tree canopy is 3% and the South Nation Conservation watershed, the tree canopy is measured at 28.1 in 2014. Comments?
Comments? Go ahead. Yep. Yep, go ahead.
And I think we did, last week, we, I think, or two weeks ago, we did come across this same problem here, and I think, I think we're gonna, if need be, next year, two years, five years, we can review the bylaw and then we'll see our tree canopy. I think we, it's an open, it's a working document, a living document, so we can remedy the situation.
At the top, it says, permits will not be processed if applicants have not contacted the required authorities in subsection 6.1. Did we not say that the, they were not contacting those authorities? Go ahead, councillor Manley.
Purely to do with the counties. So that's the only entity that the applicant has to contact. Then that's what, that's 6.1, that's all.
Perfect, thank you. Nothing. Go ahead, councillor Manley.
On that point, if we go back to 6.2. On that point, if we go back to six point two, the township officer will contact the following departments, and now we're saying that the application will not be processed if applicants have not contacted.
Count, one person.
Just to say, it said six one. So go up, it's where the counties, if it's on a county road, we have to contact county.
Mr. May?
Go ahead.
So for what, for what purpose? I, why, why would they need to contact the county? Do we know?
Jacob, is there any purpose for that? Why we'd have to contact the county if we're cutting on a county road?
Right, but we've backed, we've backed away from that.
Backed away from those buffer zones on, on a county road. So I don't think that needs to be on there. Right?
Is that right?
Okay. Continue.
Thank you. So policy six point four reads as follows.
Piles of wood, stones, debris shall be removed from the subject property within the two-year permit period.
And the comment is, are stone fences examined, or do they need to be moved or hauled away?
Comments? Yeah, Councilman.
As would the GFA comments that I saw last time. Stones are, rocks and stones are completely different in weight and degree, and degree that we put a stone there can be, it's hard to. It's always not going to be a problem, you know, reviews, so I don't think you need to move the stone. It'd be as, be as you hear, but I guess. I don't think you, you're not asking people to all, so on the ground, you're already in session, that's the first time.
That's right. Yeah, if there's a stone fence along one side, you could put your, your stones there, but it's just, it's all part of that plan. Once we get that plan, it tells you where you're going to put those stones. Just, just as we've seen, seen on a few roads, when we were out on some tours, some people put them right up the road, and there's big piles right up the road. Awful, it's dangerous. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I, I, I really think some, some guidelines need to be embedded in this bylaw with regards to what's going to happen with stones. I'm, I'm not comfortable with it just being in a diagram, because that doesn't give any, it doesn't regulate what you're going to do with the stones. For example, like, I, I'm sure if, if somebody's got a house five meters from, you know, where it's going to be cleared, they, they won't be happy with, you know, stones being piled right up along the fence line there. So I think when it comes to residential properties, there's going to need to be a buffer. And I think it needs to be stated clearly. So I think we have, we're going to have to go back and, and deal with that. And then with regards to other lot lines, where, where there are different property owners, if the property owners agree that the stones can be piled there, why not? But if the property, if the abutting property owner doesn't agree, then they, then they shouldn't be piled there.
But you do realize when they put that in a, in a diagram, that it's being reviewed by our department to, to see where it's being put.
I realize that, but it doesn't provide any guidelines for the officer to go by. And I think the, the public deserve to know that if you're a farmer, you're going to be protected by this bylaw, because it's going to allow you to do such and such. And if you're a private property owner, you're going to be protected by this bylaw, because it won't allow, it will or won't allow you to do such and such. So that's why I think it needs to be embedded in the bylaw. I mean, the, the finer details of it can be included in the diagram, for sure. But I don't, it leaves it wide open. And I think that's, that's something that needs to be dealt with quite clearly.
Councilman.
I agree. I, I think we need a statement in there that says something like, no rocks or debris within so many meters of a residential property. I think that's important. And a statement that says rocks on, on, on line fences with written permission of the adjacent property owner is acceptable, or something like that.
Go ahead, Councilman.
You've got to keep it in mind that once the, we're, the two neighbors agree on the fence line, on this side of the fence line, we have to keep in mind that, and there, we have the property, if there's any trees, there's going to be trees there to cover and mask operations in the field or whatever, whatever order we made. It's the owner's property. Are we going to start telling people where, like, if they dis, if they, they remove and put their rocks, it's their property. If they want to put a big pile in the middle of their field, it's not a, it's not a.
This doesn't stop that, Jack.
What do you mean? Well, yeah, but it's, it's what you do, if, what, if you want to put a, a big stone on your front lawn, does anybody, the neighbor at the same minute? I'm just trying to say that waterline is a border line. If they respect the five meters or twenty-five meters that we did along the fence line, would the adjoining neighbor? If they want to make a circle of rocks in the middle, for us, same thing, like, they're, it's their property.
I thought, I agree.
Ninety-nine percent of the farmers will deal with the rock property and disrespect to anybody. I'm not going to think of the sun or the house.
We've had some situations.
That's why I said ninety-nine percent. I didn't see, I left one percent out, but like, nobody, you're spending seven thousand dollars an acre to leave a stone there, like.
It, it happens, Jack. That, that, that's why this is from yesterday.
It's, it's their land. Like, we, we regulated the borderline between neighbors, and we did put a big buffer around residential areas. We have to leave the trees and stuff like that. And I understand if somebody doesn't like a stone fence fifty meters from his house, maybe, but it's, it's their land. We have to respect that. You know what I'm saying? Like, they're, they're, they're also going to be buried, or there's no, ninety-nine percent of it. The thing I'm saying, if they want to leave a big stone, we're not.
Well, we're not, yeah, but we're not disagreeing with that, Jack.
No, I know, but.
What we're looking at is, is, is buffers to the, is to the residential neighbors. Go ahead, Councilman.
There is a, there is a, in the, the previous points, there is a buffer, we have to leave trees and stuff around their home, a neighbor's home or something. There is a, a buffer zone there. But then that was all into property standards. Somebody would do that on, unless, you know, like, you know, we, we have other.
No, it. I think we ended up with a, with a a thing from the last meeting, if I'm not mistaken, we ended up with something in there that talked about two point five meters around the whole property. On all property lines, correct?
But we didn't, we didn't, I don't think that we, we didn't agree to that.
Well, I think it ended up, there was a discussion on that or whatever, so I don't know.
Discussion, but I think we, we had already said, definitely not on roads, definitely not.
Kasha, can you clarify what was?
Unless there is written agreement with neighbors. So that's what I just read was what council had agreed last time.
Okay, so, so I would, I'd like to go back onto there and, and I, I'm not in favor of two meters on the lot line. I'm in favor of, of two meters around a residential property, but I'm not in favor of two meters on the, on the, and I, and I think part of the reason for that is the fact that you, we're going to end up with, if it's a whole lot line, we're going to end up with this strip of trees. If it's cleared on a neighbor's property, and it's already cleared on this property, and we're going to end up with this strip of trees, that doesn't make any sense. That's ridiculous. So my feeling is around the residential property, and, and these residential properties we're talking about are less than five acres. Most of them, most of them are in the two, two acre range. It's a small area, but I think that, that's important to keep that or whatever. But as far as the buffer around the, the whole property, I'm not in favor.
I'm not in favor of that either. I, I, I was under the assumption as well that it was just the residential aspect of it.
Yeah, I think.
So we've gone back to what number is that? Because we're all over the map.
It was line thirty in our.
Are, are we going back and finalizing that now, or?
Well, it, it has to do with this. So if we're, if we can, if that's the same two meter buffer, or, you know, with stones, I guess.
But it doesn't refer to stones, does it? But what are you thinking of adding stones in there then?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Councilman, and then what you said earlier, though, that the border trees, they have to be respected too. And border trees, I don't know what the definition is of border tree, I don't know. And we do recommend that, or if somebody's disagreement with the neighbor that is telling, let's say, a border tree, the survey has to be done, because I, I know my law laws are not, not at all what they should be. Depends even on the law. Yeah, and then we also, with you like, two point five meters, I think we were there, let's be realistic. I agree with that, so we should have, and I think if we did have something against, from a house or building or something, we did have something. So if we do, let's say we put ten meters around.
Hey, I'm just going to stop. This is where we got lost the last time. Everybody's going around in circles. We're, we're referring back. If you can just stick to what we're looking at. So we're talking about stones. Where does it end up in this bylaw? Go ahead.
It's not like the idea of the initial plan that's presented, and when our staff are reviewing it to see if it's suitable, they can tell if it's too close to neighbors, or if there's issues to address. It's a very individual situation, and I think we're overcomplicating it.
Yeah, I agree.
Councilman.
Oh, sorry. I agree with Councilman. One second. The plan is, is what we keep referring to, and go back if we're, not to go back, but if we're going to notify neighbors, then it gives them opportunity to potentially look at that plan and see what is intended. Like, whether it's going to cover their property.
Yeah. Councilman Noble.
So I will have a comment. We have to talk about lot lines, because one lot line is not like the other. My, my comment originally was to see if there was some way that we could amalgamate six point four and four point four E, because they both talk about, you know, you create the wood piles, whatever, within thirty meters of a lot line, which we all heard is too far, and then it's saying remove everything. So I think we have to give them a direction. So you can make the temporary piles, but then within two years, you have to get rid of. And then do we not even talk about wood, because that's covered in the burn bylaw? Do we just talk about stones and stumps and, and things that they have to do something with? So it might cause confusion if we have something in four point four E, and then we talk about six point four, we have to get rid of everything. There's no, stone fences are not a problem. If you're, you're cutting, it's because you want more land and you're taking care of those stone fences, but if you're adding to them, fantastic.
Councilman.
To Brenda's point, four point four E, create wood piles or piles of any other harvested material within thirty meters of a lot line. That's potentially an issue. We're looking at, our concern is for residences. So if we go thirty meters from a residence, or thirty meters from a residential lot, that's good, cover that part, and we'll get to six point four. I think there are some pretty simple changes we do right there.
Councilman.
I think just by adding the timeframe, four point four, then we can just eliminate six point four to Brenda's point, parentheses, you know, and for removal in two years.
Councilman.
Yeah, I just, I was going to agree with Councilman Madden, okay, about the thirty, thirty meters around a residence. Again, not, not to, to deal, deal with lot lines and that kind of stuff, but just around the residence.
Right.
And so stones is also going to be included in that. Is that right?
Well, was that your intention, Councilman Madden?
It, it already says piles of any other harvested material. So if they come up, we go back to the agreement with the neighbor. If the neighbor says, yeah, yeah, well, we put everything on the rock fence, we already have one, do it. They say, no, I don't want anything else in my view, go beyond thirty meters, and there's no issue.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm glad that there is that, that buffer there. My concern is, is that when you've got a diagram, and then you provide, it, it, it's the person who's clearing that provides the diagram. And then if the neighbor then has access to that diagram, and sort of says, well, I don't like anything on this diagram, then, you know, the, we don't, we, we won't have any process for, for dealing with a dispute, and we don't want to get into that.
Thirty meters?
So does this, does this stop, does this make sure that we're not going to get dragged into that then?
I would assume so. Yep. Again, we know it's a living document, and if we, we, we approach something, then we need to make a change, we will make that change. Good?
Okay.
Okay, you guys got that? Okay, next.
Together, read them at once. The requirement to remove piles of stones within two years is not always practical. Some stones can be buried, but stone piles should always be allowed in some cases. Some piles of stones are valuable and could be sold. This point is covered already in point four point four E. And then sixty, line sixty, is that this timeline is too short, again, due to their recent time frame restrictions in the burning bylaw. Such either the burning bylaw needs to be amended, or the two-year term needs to be extended. Although we recognize that the debris could be considered a nicer, or the time that the harvested materials permitted to dry is inversely proportional to the time it will take to burn. Furthermore, the burn will be much thinner and less of a nuisance with a longer timeline. Comments?
Thank you, comments. Councilman Madden.
I would suggest we, we, this is a, this is a subject probably two year, three reader, but quite often. It, it, this is the concern of two years, which I think valid. And the reference is debris, it's not sold for shipping, it's not filed for state of the field, it's really trying to be.
Got that, Jack? Go ahead.
Again, if it's not near a residential lot line, I don't think we should tell the guy that's, if he has a, if he has a stone pile there, if he wants it there, leave it there. So, yeah, so they should be included. Any move away or discarded, three years, yes.
Everybody's good with the extension to three years? Councilman Noble? Okay, thank you. Okay, three years.
Who pays to have the property surveyed? And why do we need a surveyor? Is it only for new property purchases? Or farms that have been, or farms that have been in families for decades? I would suggest the township, when a farm property has been sold to the seller and buyer, share the expense of any boundary disputes, and it is resolved before the land is transferred. I would suggest a survey that, I would suggest that no survey will be necessary if the buyer agrees and signs that he will not clear cut the land with, within five years.
Comments? Councilman.
That's right. Exactly. That's, that was the purpose of that. And that would be, that would, if, if we got down to that, that would be why the, the, our building department would ask them to get a survey. the our building department would ask them to get a survey. Go ahead.
And and does, isn't this also, isn't six point six aligned with a different section that has a a buffer and that the buffer applies unless you get a survey?
Get it surveyed to uh so that you know exactly what you're cutting. That's right.
Does it, is there another section that pertains to that?
It is.
It is.
Yeah, I think that we discussed that earlier. Go ahead, counsel Madden.
Right, an agreement, then go to town. Yeah. And if if there's a question, then a survey is required. Yeah. Okay.
Go ahead, counsel Mason.
Yeah, I think also we need to clarify in six point six eight, the manner of timeline in which harvesting is it should be clear cutting is be is to occur because uh it could be that you can't get your corn at certain time of the year. Put uh in which uh clear cutting or whatever.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes, so reference of the surveyor, it's also in line thirty. So harvest three to ten within five meters of the lot line and survey is required if the land owner wants to clear any land within two meters of the lot line. So that's not a reference to a survey.
To a survey.
Uh, but we changed that.
We we changed that. It doesn't exist that point in the law.
So what was changed is a survey is required if a land owner wants to clear land within two meters of a lot line. And the person wanting to do the clearing must pay for the survey unless there is a written agreement with the neighbors. That is the change that occurred last time.
Didn't we talk about against residential property? Not a lot line?
Yeah, residential property.
Is that uh?
Can I just ask everybody when you're talking to uh please put your mic on so that everybody and their friend quit texting me to tell people to put on their light? Thank you.
You're going over for us.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, sorry, what would? Go ahead.
Sorry, just just to do, uh, just to stay on this six point six eight, Jacob. Can we just replace harvesting by clear cutting? So that nobody feels that they need to notify the bylaw, you know what I mean? Harvesting could be corn, beans, whatever.
But it's a tree cutting bylaw.
Well. Yeah.
Okay, let's be.
Harvesting with to occur, can we not say something else?
Wouldn't. Go ahead.
Clearing.
I agree with you, Jac. Uh, I'd say to uh timeline in which land clearing is to occur. Because harvesting, we we referenced harvesting under uh good practices is not prohibited. So to say that it here it's subject to a timeline can be confusing. So if we just call it land clearing, that's it.
Okay. Let me just look that up on that one line. Good job. Everybody's good with that? Good.
Okay, so then we are replacing the word harvesting with land clearing in six point six eight. Okay, I've noted that. Um, so if you look on line sixty four, it pertains to policy six point six, the comment is as follows. Uh, the policy gives the bylaw officer too much power deciding when when they can harvest. Ultimately leaves a burden to the bylaw officer. This could add substantially to the cost and time to complete a harvest.
Hard no. Everybody, in the today, we're not, again, again, we are not stop stop cutting it on this bylaw. We're just, it's more of a nuisance bylaw on buffers and so I don't, I don't see that that's an issue. Everybody else agrees with that. Okay, move on.
Okay, now policy six point seven reads as follows.
When denying a permit, the officer must notify the applicant with any reasons for denial in writing.
Okay, and the comment is it should be made clear from the outset what conditions a permit would not be issued for. If I were to, if I were to purchase a property with the intent of obtaining a permit to clear the land and to convert it to another use, I would like to know before I buy the property that I would not be able to obtain a permit to do so.
Comments? Go ahead, counsel Winston. Deputy Mary.
Um, yeah, I I agree. It's sort of fire beware. If it's all protected wetlands, then you you kind of, you know, you should know that before you you purchase it. Uh, but I do, I I mean, I don't expect uh with the bylaws written out that we're going to be rejecting applications anyway. Um, as long as they're complete and filled, so I don't see it as a concern.
Any other further comment? No, okay.
All right, so no changes to six point seven. We can move to six point eight, the policy reads.
The applicant must apply for a burn permit and contact the fire department before burning brush. As per the open air burning bylaw forty eight dash twenty nineteen.
Okay, and the comment that we have here is this specific burn bylaw should be revised to be more flexible. If not, maybe the townships should start picking up branches, old wood, et cetera. It is picked up in other towns and small villages.
It's already taken care of in our burn bylaw. Go ahead, counsel Madden.
Just looking at that, the wording of that though, um, because we've got three different types of burn permits, right? We've got a recreational burn permit.
Yeah.
Brush and then agricultural.
Agricultural.
We're talking about agricultural burns here, aren't we?
Yeah.
So that should probably be changed before before, just before burning. Take, take the word brush out of there.
Yeah, must apply for an agricultural burn permit.
Yeah, there we go. Ag burn permit, yeah.
Agricultural burn permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before burning, yeah, okay.
Okay, so we can move on to the next point on the following page. Line sixty nine, policy eight point one is.
Where believes that a contravent, contravention of this bylaw has occurred, the officer may issue a work order requiring the person to rehabilitate the land or woodlands or to plant or replant trees.
The comment is that term tree should stipulate the size of replanted tree or trees.
Comments? No. Go ahead.
Oh, it shouldn't, you should just replant trees, just in, they can be little saplings like this or.
Let's uh, go ahead.
You're replanting, you're replanting what you can get your hands on as far as sapling seedlings. You're not talking about replanting in ten foot meter. And that's not feasible. Not feasible. But if you cleared something and you're ordered to replant, you're going to either the forestry saplings to to plant. I don't know that we need to mess that aside.
Well, yeah, but if, let's say someone's come in and they have raised ten.
But wouldn't that be part of, uh, that's part of the uh, the uh, what you brought up before, eh?
As boundary trees, right?
Yeah. So if they cut down boundary trees, they can actually be fined for that through the ministry.
Yeah.
Again, why, why should we be involved in that? I think if they have done it and if, you know, Jacob can say, are you okay with planting? But if they want to take it further, they need to take it to the ministry.
Yeah, but the ministry doesn't in insist on the replanting. It's us, right?
We're insisting on the replanting, but if they want larger trees or they want a fi, the person fined or then they have to go to the ministry.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Believe it.
Okay, policy four eight point one. So moving to line seventy, policy eight point two is.
Uh, the work order shall set out the name and the owner and the municipal address or the legal description of the land, reasonable particulars of the contravention, the work to be done and the date by which the work must be done. A statement that if the work is not done and compliance with the order within a specified time period, then this company may have the work done at the expense of the owner and contact information of the officer.
And the comment is timeline, timeline frame guidelines should be included in this bylaw as well as stipulations regarding assurance of long term health of replanted trees.
Comments? Go ahead, counsel Madden.
Uh, I do agree with the health of replanted trees because you have a, you're gonna have a a certain death rate in new plants. I'm not sure how we want to get into that. Um, but I will add that F addresses what we just talked about for a one because the work to be done is easily include any specific caliber or caliber of tree. Um, but as far as ensure viability for three years, five years, ten years, getting into something that's really long for for us in terms of administration aspect. I don't know. Should maybe be in there, but I'm not sure how we frame that.
Comments? Is it in or is it out? There are no other comments?
I I think it's um it it's tough to know where to start and where to stop. It's the same question of, you know, whether or not we should determine the size of the trees, right? A bigger tree will have a better chance of surviving for sure.
Counselor Madden.
Perhaps we can take a look and see if uh forestry practices. As far as replanting and how you maintain them, how long you've got to manage them. I think usually there's a, you've got to maintain them for two years, three years. I've seen on some RFPs.
A week.
Counselor Mason.
I think there is well defined guidelines in the mining act where the after replanting land. Yeah, put it a long now. So if we look at the mining act, the whatever reclamation or even the forestry practices, I think they're all in there. So we can follow the guideline. We can maybe add.
Counselor Winston.
It does save the time in which the work must be done and I think the health of trees long term is very subject to so many variables. I think again, we're getting outside of what we're trying to address.
Agreed. So I think, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll look at it through the best forest or the forest practices. Go ahead.
Or or could we say under the guidance of the local conservation authority? I know we don't, didn't want to get into that, but.
No.
No.
I just, yeah, on that point, I think you would find if the conservation authority is doing anything with trees, they'd actually farm it out to a registered professional.
I see.
Right.
I agree with you, John. It's kind of.
Okay, next.
Okay, so we are adding according to the best forestry practices. Is that right?
It's good, Mike. That's what you're saying. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, line seventy one, policy ten point one reads as follows.
An officer, peace officer or any other person appointed for the purpose of enforcing this bylaw has the power to enter upon and examine any lands, yards, vacant lots, grounds at any reasonable time or times. And may be accompanied by such other person or persons as a need necessary to properly carry out their duties under this bylaw.
Uh, the comment reads, are we talking about clear cutting bush? Is it a clear cut bylaw or does the officer have the power to enter farmyards, lanes, vacant lots, houseyards? Anything that does not have to have bush on it? Should this be removed? Why would they have the power and authority to enter these areas if there is no law plans to clear there?
It wouldn't be there.
I I.
Yeah, I, go ahead, Jacob. I I think that uh.
Maybe if I can just add something, this is uh something that's addressed in the property standards by law. So any officer regardless of the bylaw can enter any other property if he deems it necessary to check what's going on. So it's pretty much.
Standard.
Yeah, go ahead.
Bylaw like the uh, but we had talked about the not just walking in or something like we do we need to notify the property owner that we are going in or?
Well, it it says when they have to have visible grounds, so you can't just roam.
And we tend to call. We tend to try to.
Yeah, I know, I know. And maybe or at least present a identification like because we had that before that the people, yeah.
Okay. Okay, counsel Madden.
Just to simplify this, it says for the purpose of enforcing this bylaw. That's all we're talking about.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay, so for the purpose of enforcing this bylaw in front of the policy ten point one. Okay, so moving on to line seventy three, policy ten point four reads as follows.
No person shall hinder, interfere with or otherwise obstruct either directly or indirectly any officer, peace officer or any person appointed for the purpose of enforcing this bylaw, including any person who may be accompanied such person in the lawful exercise of any power under this bylaw.
And the comment reads as follows, the handling of officers must be considered in item and be subject to the fines of the bylaw. This will help ensure that sufferer would respect as this has happened up front. Sorry, as as a problem, the protection of our municipal employees is important and that will be an incentive for landowners to comply.
Are you now protected in, go ahead, Jacob.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I I think this is the, this is good to have there is just to make sure that anyone that comes with an officer is also protected. And uh, mind you, all the section then was also approved by by a lawyer in a previous bylaw that we did in the clean yard bylaw. So it's actually wording coming directly from a lawyer. So I don't see any uh issues with any of these.
I saw the comment as being in support.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think we need to uh read the next one. It is a bylaw officer that decides if somebody contravenes a bylaw. So.
Okay, so then line seventy five, twelve point three.
Point three, uh, every person who is convicted of an offense under this bylaw shall be subject to a fine that exceeding ten thousand dollars for each offense. And such fines shall be recoverable under the provincial offenses act.
Is there an appeal process if a farmer feels he has been wrong? I know there is an appeal process by the provincial courts. This could be added within the bylaw to clarify.
Okay, yeah, clarification is good. Sure. Just definitely, Mary.
It says that uh this bylaw shall be subject to a fine not exceeding ten thousand dollars. Now, I thought that we had decided that we were going, if if there was a contravention of the bylaw, um, that there were going to be really significant fines.
Jacob? I think that's the highest.
Yeah, uh, regarding the fine, sorry, I'm just talking so people can hear you.
Yeah.
Because I'm ignoring you. So basically regarding the fines, uh, there are two ways to uh find someone using a bylaw. So the first way is using uh set fines, which uh we will have to to work on. And like this is a set line where you go on the property, give the fine to the property owner right away, right off the bat. There is a limit, however, and I I believe it's five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars. These fines would be, uh, if let's say we go on a property, we see a contravention, we issue what's called a part three ticket. So that means that we bring the person directly to work. And the judge or the justice of the peace would decide the amount of the fine. So the maximum here is just there because that's the maximum that the justice of the peace would be allowed to uh, to 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 issue on the land owner. So probably us that would decide. It's just wording that's coming directly from the from the provincial office of that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I I thought we had decided to um delete that section and then just go with our own fines.
We do it. Uh, however, it removes the, it removes the the right for us to to bring the person to court. If if they keep doing it, then so in in this way we can apply for a like the a stop. So we can't do it again or whatever.
Okay, well, let let's say, let's say somebody clears a significant piece of land, a property without a permit. That that's a significant um.
Contravention.
Contravention. Um, is that, if, so if it goes to court. In that, if, so if it goes to court and they get slammed with $10,000, well, that's nothing. So how do we then like apply like a, a really stiff penalty?
I think if you look at 12.4, a director or officer of a corporation who only concurs in a contravention is by law by a corporation is guilty in an offense and is liable upon the conviction of a fine not exceeding $100,000.
So, so how, how would, would you apply one fine and then you decide to apply another one? It seems.
The 10,000 is for a person and the 100,000 is for a corporation. So if, if it's a corporate, if it's a person doing the work on behalf of a corporation, you can find the person doing it and you can find the corporation.
Right.
But like the, these fines would be the, the biggest fines we could go and try to get because the set line would be much lower than that. So basically this is just another tool we can use to, to, to.
Okay, right. I just wanted to make sure that, that, you know, the smaller fines just didn't supersede everything and then.
Councilman.
Like the bylaw has to have teeth, right?
Yeah, I think if you look, it says for each offense. So if he does, doesn't have plans, 10 grand, didn't contact the proper authority, so there could be multiple offenses on the same land. So.
Okay, as, as long as we're, you know, covered. That's, that's my point.
Did you get that out of Mr. Wilson's law class in high school or?
I can't.
I'd like to think that we're going to work through.
Good. Everyone go with that. And I think we're good with the next one since we don't have the choice on fines. So we can move to 78.
Okay, thank you. So 78, technical comments for the schedule, starting with schedule B. So if you look on the schedule B printed in front of you, the comment for this one is additional space is needed for the name and phone number of the excavator operator for most of the rocks and unearthed tree roots. Both the cutter and excavator operator need to provide the township with the names of their insurers and provide signatures. And the application for permit to harvest trees, any cutter clearing more than 15 acres needs to pay the township a $500 permit fee over 25 acres. It should be 1,000 over 35 acres. It should be 2,050 acres and more. This should be 5,000. So they are just suggesting larger amounts for the fees as well.
Comments? Go ahead.
I think Mr. Mayor, we already covered that. We last said a fee for $50 an acre or maximum or something.
$500.
So I think we've covered that.
Everyone good with that? Okay, technical comments, 79.
Okay, an observation that schedule B mentions the conservation authority, but schedule A does not list conservation authority, so that would be added. Any comments? Okay, 81, technical comments. The RCA watershed is the larger of the two watersheds jurisdictions. As per the official plant schedules, having with significant woodlands and natural heritage features, the majority of the tree cover falls within the RCA, North Langary, having South Nation listed a first may confuse the applicant or delay the process. So the order of the conservation authority will be the RCA first and the South Nation second. Given the RCA covers a larger portion of the territory. Any comments?
Just change the order.
All right. And then finally, schedule D, the RCA suggests providing a map with two watershed jurisdictions as well as links to the conservation fee schedules. So this would enable the applicant to know within which watershed they are, their lands. I think that is helpful and could be included. Any comments?
Go ahead.
The, the RCA is going to be charging people?
Uh, no, this hasn't been defined so far. No.
No, but it says talks about a fee schedule.
Defined by the MOU if there is one.
Oh.
There's a fee that we have it right now.
I don't think we'll be doing an MOU with them.
Okay.
So do we, do we need this in there? I don't think so.
No.
It's going to come up in the permit process.
We.
Sorry? Yeah. Yeah, so the map for the watershed, but not the fee.
Okay.
If, if we, uh, if the, he asks the conservation authority for a comment, they're going to charge. Which we're going to have to charge the applicant. So that'd be the only E, I think. And right now we do. Go ahead.
Well, as was this constant previous meetings, it will be asked who would be flagging applications if it's necessary to be forwarded to the conservation authority. So as I mentioned, we, if there is some provincial significant features like NCIS, so this would not occur very often. Again, so it wouldn't be the applicant, it will be us that would be forwarding.
Okay.
So no fee to the applicant.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
Right, right, right. Yeah.
Okay, so then 8, 83, we can skip. There is no MOU that has been contemplated. 84, summary, applications, schedule B must be submitted complete along with the fee of $50 per acre up to a maximum of 500. And the RCA recommends taking out either complete or alone. So that's just wording.
Thank you for the grammatical, grammatical lesson. So can we take out complete or along in that?
And then applications will be processed within 30 days. Section three and five, the comment is the RCA recommends adding complete or alone. Okay, in front of applications.
Okay. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Just before we were done with this clear-cutting bylaw, can we not add another line? Like I, I was thinking about that a couple of weeks ago. If we take, like we do with the planning department, if we would take the 10% of our fees, we're collecting and start our tree replanting, like put the money aside like we do for a parkland in near or something, near a parkland. If we put 10% of the fees collected towards our tree replanting program, then we would, at least it would serve to purpose here to, to prevent and also to, to protect the trees and replant. So I thought it would be addition, addition. If we put it in there, I don't know if that's.
I'm fine with that. We can include that as an addendum.
And then that would be a fun start and then we could draw from there to give money to the RCA and.
Yeah.
Do you have a fine?
Not just these.
Yeah, I put 10% of the more too.
Again. Yeah. Okay, so I want to ask if, I know that many of us got comments after our last Zoom meeting. So is there any other items within this bylaw that you would like to discuss again, Councilman?
Here we go. I just want to go back to the 30, line 30, which deals with harvesting trees within 2.0 meters of a lot line. I, I would, I really want to see that, that change to harvest trees within 2.0 meters of a residential lot line.
I agree.
And not, not lot line.
If you have farmland on farmland. Leaving up a buffer doesn't really.
I don't know if we want to consider, like I, I put down something like on, on property that has a joining line which is tree covered. It is recommended that a small buff, a small buffer be left to prevent damage to the border trees. We could say, say something like that. I don't know if that's, that's something we need or. Yeah, but if there are no trees on that maiden property, right, that's.
Moving the 2.5 meter of the lot line, adding the residential lot line, 2.5 meter, I think we decided. I think we went.
No, no, this is. No, there's something for a house and there's also something for a lot line. So you're, you want the two meters all the way around? Okay, you don't know. I do not just on the residential.
Residential portion.
You just want the residential portion?
Residential portion.
Residential portion, all the way around.
No, lot lines are not the same. So we, not we, but we talked about lot lines. Owner, it might be separate properties, but same owner. So that's something different. Organic grow on the other side. They had a bush, a complete big bush. That's a difference. So that's, that should be a wider buffer than two meters. A house that faces north and has a bush, that's always going to have no trees. That's a different lot line. And definitely, definitely bushes that abut each other. Definitely minimum, minimum two meters because then now you've exposed the bushes that other people own that they didn't, they weren't exposed to before. And then all of a sudden you've cut right to the lot line. And then definitely, everybody knows that every farmer around here that's anything, you know, what, 80 years older was never properly surveyed. So that's a different lot line. So I, this might be something you could put in a number, but then we might have to go back to each plan is different because what is the line? Who's on either side? Because yes, if it's farmland leading to farmland, it happened to be trees, then probably he will agree that I have no problem. But on the other hand, no trees means crops, means pesticides, means different animals, different bugs, soybeans, don't get me started on ladybugs, stuff like that. So a lot line is not a lot line, is not a lot line. So that's a really tough issue.
Councilman.
I'm going to say we actually, we went over most of this. We reduced it to two meters. I'm partially in agreement with the residential part, but go to the end of it and it says an agreement with the neighbors. So if you happen to own the two pieces that are touching, you're the neighbor, you have an agreement, you don't have to leave anything. It would also address a tree property that is to remain tree. And this piece is to be clear-cut. You're going to protect that bush by leaving the two meters. So when we put in that agreement with the neighbor part, it was kind of to protect everybody. And then if the neighbor agreed that, yeah, yeah, by all means, cut right to the line, you could do it. So we kind of had it all addressed by leaving the two meters all the way around. Ending an agreement with the neighbor.
But the two meters doesn't include the lot lines for the township nor the counties.
Correct. And we also, I think it addressed that. We said we didn't have to leave it at roads. We'd taken out a portion about the roads. This was purely about property, property, not property to government.
Deputy Mayor.
Well, it's, it's, I mean, Brenda makes some, some, some good points there. I, I'm wondering if, if we can, maybe we're going to have to be a little bit more specific and, and define, okay, what happens up against an already tree property? This is what happens up against a residence. This is what happens up against a, I don't know. I mean, maybe, maybe we, I, I think maybe we should, we should look at being a little more specific.
Go ahead.
I understand the owner of a woodlot that goes up right up to the property line? And it's a big bosner for 100 acres or 50 acres? And why, why, why does a joining guy? Yeah, two meters is sixty, not very much from a lot line. But what's the issue of that? Having one two meter and there's a thousand there, like this, this, that side of the fence isn't going to protect the big side. It's not six two meters is going to protect anything. So, I don't know, either we go, I don't know. I think we're okay to removing it from, apart from the residential areas and sensitive areas, but.
So, Councilman Manley, what's your, you started it off, what's your opinion?
Yeah, I, I'm still, I'm in favor of a round, of a buffer around residential lots.
And, and inserting about the bush? Did you have that in there? No.
Just a recommendation. Not a requirement, just a recommendation that, that if it's, if it's bordering a bush, bush property, that they leave a, a buffer of two meters or whatever.
So it looks like there's three of us in agreement with that. I'm looking at the other four. You, how, how do you? I'm seeing three over there, kind of on the same page.
Well, I, I, I think it's, it's absolutely imperative that there be that buffer around residential properties for sure. I, I'd like to know, you know, whether or not a buffer would, is, is really important to protect the other forest. I, I don't, I don't know that. I don't have any knowledge of that, but if it is important, then we ought to consider it. I mean, maybe, I, I mean, I'd, I'd be in favor of uh, of finding out more about that and going just down to the residential and seeing what kind of comments we get. Because this is, this is another draft.
Councilman.
Through that with us the last time we discussed it, saying that two meters was a minimum to save the roots of the trees on the other property owner's lot line. And I think you can see that when you take a drive through the country, all trees that are dying along the lot lines.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not thinking, I'm not necessarily thinking so much on the, on the, on the, the woodlot side of things. I'm, I'm thinking the trees that are on the, on the border, that are on that, that border or whatever. That that two meters may protect those trees that are on the border, which are joint ownership. Half owned by the tree lot person, half owned by the farmer that wants to clear or the, the organization that wants to clear the land.
I think conventional wisdom would say that when you're looking at a forest that's grown, we're not talking whole growth for the most part here because we don't have it anymore. But anything that's grown back in the last 50 years, that forest has grown as a community. If you start cutting half of that out, you can drive around, you'll see places that are clear-cut and you'll see the edge of, part of that can get blown over. It's, if it's on the windward side. So it's not just protecting roots on the boundary, say, but it's protecting that property that is to remain as a woodlot. So again, I go back to this, you can add in the residential, but if we leave that two meter, it covers everything. And if they have an agreement with the neighbor, you know, maybe the neighbor is a farmer as well and they've already got that land cleared. Yeah, yeah, by all means, clear right up to the property line. You know, there's, there's, there's a remedy here. There's a remedy in that language.
Go ahead, Jacob. You had a.
Yeah, well, this may create some more confusion and I'm sorry. Like some, like the, the fact that you're talking about a residential property. So that, that may be an issue because if a farmer has 75 acre property and he builds a house on it, like how do you define a residential property? Because, because you, you can have a woodlot, a 50 acre woodlot, you can put a house on it. And the use now becomes residential. The zoning is not, but the use is residential. So when you say the buffer from a residential property, you have to keep in mind that a residential property is not always that one acre property with a little house in the pool. It can be like a very large property, which like I'm just letting you know that it may be difficult to, to clearly identify what is a residential property. If you find like a third, a residential property that has a house on it and one that has not, that could have one. So there, there's that. Just to keep in mind, I just wanted, because it's going to be hard for us to, to enforce it if the, the guy comes and says, well, it's a residential property and my house is on it. And it's true, the house is on it. So the, the property is a residential property, although it may be 75 acres of woodland with one house on it.
So, so a residential property of five acres or less.
Where is that?
What's that? Where? Where is it? There's lots of them. There's lots of, there's lots of properties where, that have been declared surplus to the, they need to the farm, that are a little, a little property, which is under five, they're all under five acres.
Surrounded by trees.
What do you mean surrounded by? Most of the time, if, if it's a lollipop severance, they're surrounded by uh, cleared land.
Yeah.
So they're not surrounded by bush, so this wouldn't apply.
Right.
There are, I mean, I can see them, there's some on, on, I'm using concession fourteen, Indian lands, there's some there, there's, there's a pocket of houses. That abut farmland, that have their, their tree lots, uh, for sure, there's some there, uh, but.
Maybe there's not a lot, I don't know.
There's probably not a lot. Okay, well, before we get hung up on this, and maybe staff come up with uh. Something circulated to council. So that we can comment, and maybe we can come up with something that can go into the final draft. Yeah, exactly, well. That's why we pay any big bucks. Everybody good with that? Okay, maybe check, check some other municipalities, what they do, and if there's something already out there, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Okay, is there other portions that somebody wanted to look at? Go ahead, Councilman Noble.
That discussion on lot lines that we made into G, even though we're taking out C, has nothing really to do with D. Which is harvesting trees within fifteen meters of an existing dwelling. We're keeping the dwelling.
The dwelling.
Meters. This has nothing to do with the lot line.
Right. Just to really clarify things.
I know, I know.
I actually like Brenda's point, because it's true.
Again, because an agreement with the neighbor can supersede that.
But what if you don't get along with your neighbor, and it makes sense, what if your neighbor, what if your, your neighbor has farmland right up to the edge, and. You guys don't get along, and he doesn't agree, and it just doesn't make sense that he doesn't agree, I mean, it's farmland on farmland. What? What's that? I know what happens.
So that's why you have the two meters.
I know, but what if it doesn't make sense to have that two meters on that side, so you're wasting six feet of farmland that, that abuts to farmland? It may, it makes no sense to. So again, your problem, Jacob. That's what it sounds like.
As long as my mic is up, I'll remind you that we have a lot of things happening right now that we're not on. So.
I don't understand what that means.
All the things that I mentioned, the green road and all the other stuff that's going on, we're not.
We are, we have. We have followed up on that.
Cool.
Okay. Are we good?
We're good.
We're good?
Good.
Go ahead.
Um, well, I, um. There, did we remove the language early on about the, the nuisance factor? Did we remove that, to recall?
Yes, Kasia. Did, did, sorry, can you speak a little bit louder for Kasia to hear?
Did we remove the wording that referenced to the nuisance factor of this bylaw? Did we remove that earlier?
Nonsense, can you, uh, which line is it of the policy or?
I'm not sure. It was under intent.
Okay, so this is on line four, it should be explained to indicate that the intent is to regulate the nuisance component of land development. And the council's comment was regulating and controlling clear cutting, do not mention nuisance, so yes.
Okay, I think one of the cuts, I made, one of the comments we got was that it was a. A good idea to mention nuisance, because um, I think we removed it, thinking we were being sensitive to the topic when we don't. That's not really necessary, because it is addressing the nuisance factor.
Yeah, I think, and whereas, like, if you look on the first page of the draft bylaw. The first line of the whereas, council has determined that it is, it is desirable achieving the objective of the. Line two thirty, regulating and controlling clear cutting and the associated public nuisance. On the, do you have that? On the, the, whereas, I think that was the GFA comments last night? And then we.
Yeah, so they were responding to the meeting from last time, so that was the new comment.
Well, because we.
We didn't make the changes yet on the document, we haven't made any changes on the document.
Okay, so leave it in there.
We decided to take it out.
That's what, that's what we're saying.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
You were the one that was sensitive last time.
I know, I know, I didn't think you looked at it.
I'm sure, did you need a hug or? So we'll leave it in?
Okay.
Anybody else have, uh, do I have the GFC, you have your hand up, or was that? Okay.
Um, and another question that was raised was with regards to um. That selective tree cutting and good forestry practices will be exempt from this bylaw, so did we make any changes with? Did we make any changes with regards to that?
That's right.
Okay, so, um. Okay, then why did we receive that comment, then?
They may be looking at the original bylaw.
Okay. Where is, I don't know where it is, I'm just looking at the comments.
Yeah, we definitely talked about.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, and it's.
And it needed to.
Needed to be in there, so she's saying it is in there.
It is in there, we didn't, we didn't take it out.
We didn't have it in, I think we inserted it in, right, Kasia? It's in.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry, so, so we, we, okay, very good, thank you, um.
Any further? Now over there? Over here? Okay. Thank you, everyone, so again, we will, they will incorporate all of council's comments. Into the next draft bylaw, speculated one more time, or comments from the public again. And council will make a final draft that we will adopt. Everybody is good with that? Okay?
And there'll be a public consultation when possible.
Consultation, yes, well, we're going to do the best we can as far as in-person meetings. We may have to have several of them to accommodate people that want to come and make comments, so we'll, again, we're. Council wants to be open to hearing everybody's comments on it, so we'll, we'll do the best we can, considering, go ahead, go ahead.
One last question, um.
Because we do this for the other bylaws, I know we talked about it once, and I don't know if it ever came back up again, did we ever think about putting in a deposit? Like for building bylaws? So when you apply for the permit, you put a deposit down, and then when you do a good job, you get it back?
I think the only problem was it was just because it's three years. You know, that you have to wait, as opposed to a building permit generally gets done within.
Few months.
Few months. Go ahead.
If I just make a quick comment for the benefit of those people listening in, the public, and I know that Mr. Mayor addressed this. Before the meeting of our, of our first meeting with this, with regards to the fact that. This document really is a document intended to regulate the nuisance aspects of clear cutting. It's not intended to address conservation. And that council is going to be, is committed to um, whether it be establishing an ad hoc committee. Injecting, working into our strategic plan, whatever it may be, in order to advance. The issue of conservation, tree, tree conservation in, in North Hungary, so I just wanted to reiterate that. Just so that people don't think we're ignoring the conservation issue, because we won't be.
Okay, any further comments, or we close the meeting? I have a motion by Councilor Noble, seconded by Councilor Manley, that there be no further business discussed, the meeting was adjourned at two forty one. All those in favor?
Favor.
Motion is carried, thank you.